Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 13th, 2025 Victor Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start with a pledge, please. A few announcements. The emergency exits are to your left and right, outside of the rooms. Restrooms are out the back and to your left. Please, if you haven't already, sign the attendance sheet on the back table and even if you're presenting. There are business cards back there with contact information for the planning department and also on the back table copies of any resolutions that we'll be reading tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones so that we don't interrupt those who are presenting before the board. And also, please take all conversations you may want to have amongst yourselves out of the room and close the doors behind you so you don't interrupt those presenting before the board. We have one set of meeting minutes that Lisa distributed, the 22nd of April. Anyone have comments on those? Scott?
No.
Nope, okay. I will say Ernie was injured this week and he was unable to attend this evening. We wish him well if he's watching, which you may or may not want to add additional pain to his life. So if he is watching, hey, Ernie, hope you're back soon. Correspondence. Oh, yeah, sorry. Right, so we can't vote on that yet. So we don't have a quorum without Joe since he was absent that meeting.
Yeah, on this way.
Okay. Any received correspondence, Lisa, this week? Okay. I didn't see any listed, so. Orders. I believe Drew's not here, but Keith Maynard is from planning, so he'll give us an update for the next meeting and any carryovers.
Good evening. Keith Maynard, project manager for the Town of Victor. Your next planning board meeting is Wednesday, May 28th at 7:00 PM. New to the agenda, both public hearings are Marshall Site Plan at 7232 Valentine Road. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a single-family home on lot number five of the Valentine Meadows subdivision. The second one is the Barber Site Plan, which is 1240 Heather Lane. Applicant is requesting approval to construct a single-family home and a detached garage on that site. And then, final application, subdivision application for Bluestone Trail, formerly 7200 Rossin Road, is also on your next agenda. Applicant is requesting final approval to develop a 59-for-sale townhome unit subdivision on 18.5 acres. Project will consist of two private roads off the north side of Rossin Road. This will be the third step in a three-step process for a major subdivision. The preliminary plan for Bluestone Trail was approved on February 25th, 2025, plus any carryovers. Any questions?
Oh, good. Thanks, Keith.
Yep, no problem.
We do have listed seven items on the agenda, three of, four of which are, have been postponed or removed until the next meeting at least. Collette Burm Site Plan was removed. Inverview Estates subdivision was removed. Element by Weston at Eastview Mall is removed and Chick-fil-A Restaurant at also the Eastview Mall was removed. So the three remaining, we're ready to start. The first one is Bell Atlantic, doing business as Verizon. This is an open public hearing. Applicants requesting approval to modify the antennas on the roof of the existing building. This is on Fisher Station Drive. So, good evening.
Good evening, members, excuse me, members of the board. It's Jared Lust from Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon Wireless. We are here because on March 26th, we applied to make an antenna change to the existing facility located off, it's 600 Fisher Station Drive. Again, this is the second modification we have made to the project. There were a couple of questions by the town engineer. It's pretty straightforward. We're taking down an antenna, replacing it with a different antenna. The need for the antenna is because the, the traffic usage on that particular antenna is maxed out, so we're proposing a new, a new antenna that's a little bit larger, but it'll, instead of transmitting only two channels, it'll now transmit four channels. Doing so, doing so, it's, there's more RF energy coming out of the antenna. And in order to, to make it safe from an RF emissions perspective from the roof, we needed to raise it about a foot to meet the, the federal standards for the emissions. So that's why your question was, why is the antenna a little taller? It's a little different event antenna as well. We needed to raise it to meet those federal emission standards. But in doing so, we're well below the emissions standards necessary for railing. So the railing, et cetera, that is on the roof now can be removed. And so we're going to take that, that, that off. So that's the, those are the two bases for your, for your questions.
Can you talk about that railing just a little bit more? Is that railing to keep personnel away from the antenna?
Keeps them a certain distance from, so if you happen to be a roofer and you're getting close to the antenna, it won't allow you to, because you're too close from, from health and safety perspective. That's now, that, that issue is resolved with the antenna being higher. So again, pretty straightforward. It's the swapping of an antenna. If you have any questions, I think the application was quite thorough. There were a couple of their technical questions asked that I responded to in, in the subsequent letter, so.
I was noticing, did you say you're only raising it a foot? Or is it the antenna is actually a foot higher, but there's a much taller pole that it goes with, correct?
It, I think we're raising it, the antenna height about between one and two feet. Is it three, is it a four feet? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, it looks a lot taller than your rendering, so.
Yeah, sorry, it's four feet.
Okay, thanks.
The antenna may be just a little foot larger. I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that.
No problem. That's, that's the only comment I had about what you were saying. Joe, any other questions?
No, I just had the question about the safety rail, so I'm good.
Okay, and Scott?
I don't have any questions. We've, we've been down this road before on, with cell towers and it's, you're reworking one that's already there, so it's not a.
Yes, the second time, so we've sort of maxed out here.
Okay, well, this is actually a public hearing, so I want to give the public, anyone here, an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant. Is there anyone that's got any questions about this? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Second, second.
Joe's seconds, all in favor? Okay. Public hearing's closed. I don't believe there's anything else unless Wes, anything from LaBella's perspective on this?
Just to formally document that LaBella's comments, we, we issued a letter dated May 5th, 2025, for which the applicant this evening has responded to our, our comments. And I think we're satisfied. Very minor technical comments, and then we did comment on the safety rails and the, and the antenna height, and that's all been addressed. So I think we're going to be set.
Okay, good. We do have a prepared resolution for this one. If you need a copy, it's on the back table. So I'll read that now. Whereas, the planning board made the following findings effect. This is Bell Atlantic, 600 Fisher Station Road, application 11 S P 2025 and 3 S U 2025. A site plan application and special permit application were received on March 27th, 2025 from Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems, doing business as Verizon Wireless. By Secretary of Planning Board for a site plan entitled Bell Atlantic, Doing Business as Verizon, that's the project. And there are 11 total wherashes. Whereas, the Town of Victor Planning Board as lead agency has reviewed and considered part one of the environmental assessment form, application materials, public comments, and environmental record concerning the proposed action, as well as completed applicable parts, two and three of the environmental assessment form, and identify no significant adverse impacts. Now therefore be resolved that no potential significant adverse environmental impacts were identified with the proposed action using the criteria for determining significance identified in 6 N Y C R R Section 6177 C 1, and in accordance with 6 N Y C R R Section 6177 C 2 and 3. And the Town of Victor Planning Board hereby finds and concludes that the proposed action does not present a potential significant adverse environmental impact, and hereby issues a negative declaration. And be it further resolved that the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems, site plan entitled Bell Atlantic E B A Verizon Wireless drawn by Caustic Engineering dated March 4th, 2025, received by the Planning Board Secretary March 27th, 2025, Planning Board Site Plan with application of 11 S P 2025 and special use application, number 3 S U 2025, be approved with the following conditions. Condition one, that site plan comply with Town of Victor design and construction standards. Number two, that comments in a letter dated May 5th, 2025 from LaBella Associates be addressed. And number three, that a building permit be obtained before construction begins. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So, here a motion for.
I'll move it.
Provable, Scott moves, Joe seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Very 3-0, so. Yeah. Thank you. We're just waiting for Al to grace us with his presence, so that's good.
So the planning board's down on Wednesday this week.
Glad you could make it.
Hi, Al. All right. We just finished number one, Verizon, Bell Atlantic of Verizon Wireless. Number two, Hosleton Enterprises Site Plan and Change of Use, 744-7, State Route 96. Applicants requesting approval to open as a wholesale retail auto sales facility, which includes replacement of existing fencing, adding fencing, replacement of lights, and improved parking lot. And some additional detail, I'm sure. We won't, this is an open public hearing. We do not have a resolution prepared for this one tonight, so we'll finish that at a later meeting. So, good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Tom Fromberger, M R B Group. With me tonight is Drew Hosleton and Tom Burdino, representing Hosleton Enterprises, 74047 Route 96 LLC. As you have up on the map there, they have purchased lot one of the former Wilkins RV and Ballentine RV site. Proposed use includes wholesale to retail auto sales, dealer-to-dealer trades, parts, accessory sales, storage of retail equipment, vehicle maintenance and repairs, delivery, truck parking, and general service of some small office space. Site improvements shown on our site plan, which you have before you in the screen, the top of the page is Route 96. Omni Park is on the west side there, the left side of the page.
Tom, if you do need a laser, I think there's one up there for your use, and go to the left screen over there. Thanks.
Got it, can do. Site improvements include, include new fencing. So we're replacing existing fences, which go around the property right now, up to about this point. New fencing is proposed in through here. There's an existing slide gate that's up in the top location.
Is that along the drainage ditch that's bisects those?
It would run parallel to the, to the drainage ditch.
Okay, thanks.
Right now, the fence and guide rail actually bridge across the drainage ditch, so this will kind of clean that up. Also part of the project are replacing the high-pressure sodium lights with more efficient LED cutoff dark sky compliant lights. We're looking at seal coating the front parking area and restriping that as well. The property is approximately 3.4 acres. The majority of our efforts have already been to date, which was a new roof. And as part of that, on the exterior are, or were, a lot of floodlights or lighting that was attached to the roofing and siding. Those have been coming down. Our intention is to replace them with wall packs, something that is more appropriate for the, for that use. We did submit and receive comments from LaBella as well as the building department, code enforcement. It is our understanding that we need site plan review. We need a change of use. Now we need a special use permit as well as potentially zoning board approval. And that would be for the new fence section that we're installing here. It does cross an existing sanitary sewer easement, and that easement was put in place from lot two to lot one for their sanitary sewer. The overall parking for the site, we've looked at that again. There are four bays in the back section up, up here. Majority of this is warehousing. There's probably less than 1,000 square feet of office space. So we're looking at somewhere around 30 parking spaces needed. We definitely have space on site for that long-term. Again, our, our uses are really kind of the wholesale auto sales, dealer-to-dealer. We do have the maintenance bays in the back section, but we would like some display parking. I did provide a updated plan for you, for that. Display parking would potentially be up in here. There may be a little bit in this area. And then, behind the fence line is kind of the primary spot as well. So, delivery vehicles and any outside storage would be behind the fence in this area. Right now, it is pavement around here with a gravel section in the middle. That is proposed to, to remain. I think that generally overview, and then we can open up for questions and go from there.
No questions?
Sure, I got a few. Wholesale retail, are you anticipating like an auction environment for the retail part of it, or how's, how's that gonna work?
No, I'm, I'll defer that to Drew.
The retail side.
If you could step up to the mic, that would be helpful for.
The retail side would just be customers coming in. No auctions. Yeah.
Okay. And the maintenance facility, oil changes and things like that? Will you have, I don't notice any tank for, you know, the used oil and things like that? Do you anticipate a, a tank of any size, or?
Yeah, we would have, we would have to, we would have to add that if needed.
Okay.
It does have a oil water seperer ready for the trench drains that are inside the building, so that's already pre-existing. It exits the back. But yes, for typical oil changes, fluids, those would all be put into tanks and.
Also, that's all existing already?
Yeah, most of it could be, some of it could be existing based on being an RV. Some of that was removed as they, you know.
Sure.
Got rid of that facility and transitioned to their new, new spot.
Okay, thank you.
Al?
Well, just general comment, I think it's a, a good use, keeping with kind of that vicinity with now Valvoline oil change and Delta Sonic, it kind of blends into that kind of use. Are there any planned enhancements to the, to the facades, or, you know, anything to the elevations to enhance it, or just use as is?
I think right now, it's just kind of a combination of see what it is, get into the space, utilize it, and see, see what we need to do. The first priority was kind of putting the roof on, stabilizing it. Right now, we don't have any exterior plans proposed, but obviously if we did, we'd, we'd come back with you, to you guys with an architectural elevation.
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Al?
I guess I saw LaBella's comment on landscaping, and, and that's one of my concerns. I drove by again tonight to look at it on my way to the meeting, and it's a constrained site. There's not a lot you can do with. There's a lot of pre-existing non-conforming stuff there, no question about it. But it's not very attractive. And with respect to Valvoline, which we processed a year ago or so, I mean, we had some really good discussions and some really good results with landscaping on that. I understand that you have a limited display area, and so you don't want to over-landscape and prevent people from seeing what you're selling presumably. But I'd like to see some sort of landscaping plan that would do something to make it more attractive, personally.
We can look at the landscaping, Scott. I think a lot of the issue is kind of in this quadrant, too, where we don't really control, it's outside the property.
Right.
You know, that definitely is something that would be enhanced by others. I mean, for landscaping, you know, our, our property is very narrow, as you mentioned. There might be something at the corner or something.
Foundation plantings maybe, or something, you know.
Be looked at, or.
It's pretty much pavement up to the building?
It is pavement up to the buildings. Maybe some pots, potted landscaping, maybe.
Give you a chance to be creative here.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah. Anything else, Scott?
That's all I have.
Okay. Yeah, for the most part, I'm echoed comments that I've heard this evening. It's, sort of reflecting on what Al said also about, it's nice seeing another, a good use made of that building. So we appreciate that, and, you know, adding to the harder there. So, yeah, anything you can do to enhance the building at some point would be appreciated, I'm sure, and look good for Hosleton, I believe, as well, to have a attractive facility there. Is it, do you expect really much traffic coming in and out from, as a retail? Or is it mostly like, I think Kitty Van Bordel has a, her old Ford dealership, that's all she does is fleet sales and stuff like that, and there's a showroom, but I don't ever see anybody going in and out of there.
I'd probably say a mix between the two. I don't think it'd be quite like, you know, quite like that, where, like you said, I don't see, ever see people, people in and out, but there'll be, there'll be more traffic than I think you see there, but not like you would at our store, like our store on Marsh Road or wherever.
Sure. Okay. Wes, anything that comes to mind that you've commented on, maybe you'll need to ask?
Well, we did, LaBella issued a letter on April 29th, and a number, a number of comments here, a lot of which we've talked about, including the lighting, and that some of the floodlights have been taken down. I realized, drove by the other day and saw that some of those lightings had come off. So we're okay there. It'll be interesting to see what you get for landscaping. And I did get, we did get response to comments today, so I don't know that there are any showstoppers in LaBella's perspective. So it's just a matter of us kind of taking a, a review of their responses and, and being satisfied. So, nothing further.
Okay. This is also a public hearing, so I want to give the people in the audience a chance to ask any questions, if there is anyone that, as for the applicant. If you'd, sir, if you could come up to the microphone, name, address, and then you can ask a question away. Thanks.
Hey, Palmer, Valentine Road. I'm one of your drivers. I spent 18 years in that building.
Oh, okay.
Are you aware how rough that building is?
Yeah, yeah.
Have you looked at the wiring in that building?
Are you asking about if he's looked into fixing it up? Is that what I'm hearing?
The wiring in the building is a little on the rough side.
Well, they talked about the roof, right, Tom?
See, you put a roof on it, needed a roof.
Yeah.
When it rains a lot, that creek fills up.
I think there is something, maybe there's a regular maintenance that we do on that.
You've got to keep the cattails cut in that creek. I know I've done it many times.
Have you been up to that sewer pump in the back?
Yeah, I just.
That was just replaced.
You need to just speak into the.
It was a sewer pump in the back.
Okay.
I guess they replaced it. I knew it was a little on the, oh, side.
Well, there's an easement between the two buildings, the two properties for.
Yeah, because the set sewer goes across to that pump. That pump up the road. Just, you know, it's black. You're aware. I wore construction boots in the spring.
You trying to discourage him from going?
No, I'm just, I'm petting him. I'm trying to tell him what he's looking at.
I'm kind of hearing a negative vibe here. I'd like to encourage these people to come into the town and fix things up, so.
Yeah, oh, it should have been torn down, but Brian didn't want to do that.
Someday, somebody may do that. Wilkins was going to do it, and then they moved out, so.
They couldn't get what they wanted, so they went to Waterloo and got what they wanted.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, to have pet self on it.
Well, thank you.
Because you were looking. I'm glad somebody doing something in that building. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments, advice? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Al moves?
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, we appreciate his comments. They're, they're definitely valuable. And as you can see, the building is in some, some conditions that, that need to be improved. You did ask about the, you know, landscaping and what we're going to do. If you've been by the Hosleton dealership in East Rochester, you know, it, it does look very nice. I, I don't know that we want to put in landscaping only to maybe potentially tear it out in the future, too. I just kind of like to curb that out as well, Scott, and just as a, as an option. I think, you know, whatever that we do in the front, we'll want to do that in kind of a respectful way and, and address those, but.
Perhaps between now and when we have an approve, a, a resolution to approve, you could maybe enlighten us a little more on what you thought about?
Sure.
Be helpful. Other than that, you guys all set?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all we got with you guys for now, but thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. So we have one final item on the agenda this evening. This is the preliminary application phase of Nicoloff Subdivision on Blazy Road. Applicants requesting approval to develop 42.8 acres into seven lots, I believe now, with a change, if I'm not mistaken. And driveways coming off of Blazy Road, second step of major subdivision. Sketch plan was acknowledged complete August 27th, 2024. And Mr. Hado is going to enlighten us on what's changed.
Good evening, Planning Board members. Yes, I'm John Hado of Lantech, Surveying and Engineering, representing Mr. Keith, Keith Nicoloff. We wish to update the planning board on the progress of the project as we continue seeking preliminary site and subdivision approvals as follows. So, one of the issues was, that was sort of delaying decision-making and so forth, was this DEC situation with the wetlands, not just our project, but many in the state. So, the DEC came back and determined that they have jurisdiction over this wetland here called W 2, and they currently have jurisdiction over this one. This one was a federal wetland, and they're taking jurisdiction of it now. And the state requires a 100-foot buffer on their wetlands. So, as a result of that, we have revised the plan of lot one and lot four, and the, you know, the, the private driveway for these four lots down in the southeast corner of the site is a result of staying out of this buffer area. If you could pull up the site plan, please, that I submitted? Thank you. So we basically shifted this road, the private drive, to serve the four lots here. And we also made some revisions to this site plan for lot one by moving the house back here out of the buffer zone. Now, this buffer zone also goes across Blazy Road, and that wetland buffer is under the jurisdiction of the DEC, even though it does go across and include the road. So as a result of that, we have revised the water main extension that previously came in from the south. It now will come in from the north, because there is a stub here, right about there, so. So we're going to extend that down here to serve these four lots, instead of up here, which would, which would have required a permit from the DEC to do that. We've also tweaked lot number five and six. I, I think we mentioned before that we went to a seven, seven-lot layout instead of eight. So we made some adjustments to the acreage of lot, new lot five and six. Seven, lot seven is back here towards the western end of the site. So the water main extension from the north has been basically approved by the water authority. The water main that came in from the south was fully approved by the State Department of Health, and now they're currently looking at coming in from the north. It shouldn't be any problem. It's the same exact details and design and everything. It's just coming in from the north. The water mains a little bit better, but, are a little bit different, but it has enough pressure to supply all seven lots. So that's where we're at, we're at. We also wondered what the status was on our waiver request. We also wondered what the status was on our waiver request to provide four lots off of one private driveway. And we did submit early in March, a bunch of our revision responses to Lobella Associates' review comments. And we were just looking, excuse me, for feedback on that.
Okay. Thank you. Wes has got some information to share. I'll ask him in a few minutes to do that. Let the board time in with any questions about the changes, if you do. Scott, if you want to.
Um, no, I'll let, I'll let Wes go first.
Okay. You guys want to wait till Wes gets done?
Sure.
Okay, he's, he's got a discussion or an overview on the, the new DEC wetland jurisdictional determination process. And I think it will help us all make sure we understand where they're coming from. And certainly, John, if you have any questions about what he's presenting, it sounds like you've dove into that pretty deeply for this as well, so.
Correct.
This, I think, is as much for the benefit of the board as anyone, so.
Yeah, thanks, Joe. This is just going to, this is going to be a quick. I don't think, I want to take too much time to go over this. But just so the planning board members understand where we're at in terms of the new DEC freshwater wetland regulations, I put together just a brief slideshow here. And so previously, in order to identify New York State DEC wetlands, you could use a, an online mapper, right, to identify where these DEC wetlands were. And they were generally wetlands that were 12.4 acres or larger. And once January 1st, 2025 came to be, the wetland, the new DEC wetland regulations came into play. And now the DEC not only regulates the 12.4 acre wetlands, but also smaller wetlands that have unusual importance or unique characteristics. And, and there are 11 of those established criteria for those smaller wetlands. So with regard to the state wetlands, the DEC wetlands, there's a 100-foot adjacent area. And that is, that 100-foot adjacent area is also regulated, as Mr. Hado said this evening. And come January 2028, the default threshold size for state wetlands will be reduced to 7.4 acres, as opposed to 12.4. So the 11 new criteria, of which one of the wetlands on this project parcel happened to meet on the southeast corner, was number 2 here, identified up on the screen. And it is situated within or adjacent to an urban area as defined by the United States Census Bureau from the 2020 data. So, and there's, there's a whole series of other items here that the DEC would qualify as being DEC-regulated or jurisdictional wetlands here. So located within a watershed experiencing significant flooding. The wetland contains rare or endangered plant species. If it provides critical habitat for essential behaviors of endangered, threatened, or special concern species, so on and so forth. So I won't go over each one of those, but the one that, that qualifies in this instance was number 2. And this happens to be just a graphic of the town of Victor as a whole. You see all the parcel lines there. And there's some shading on this map. There's some yellow shading, which is the U.S. Census 2020 urbanized area. So the particular project parcel that we're dealing with is, with is on the north side of the town, right up here where my red dot is. And immediately south of there and just to the east on that corner, there's the urbanized area. And that's, that's what tipped DEC off to take jurisdiction of that, of that wetland. The blue shading is a watershed that experiences significant flooding at times. So that's another area of the town where we will find, where we're likely to find DEC to take jurisdiction of smaller wetlands. And this is about the new jurisdictional determination process, this particular slide. Generally, there are three steps. This happens to be a screenshot of a DEC presentation that's on the, on the freshwater wetlands website. So step one is to determine if a parcel or a property is within the Article 24 jurisdiction, if it's, if it contains DEC wetlands. And that's something that the applicant did in early 2025. They submitted a parcel JD request. And the DEC has 90 days to respond to that. And then if they don't, there's a small process there at the end to, to try to get them to respond. Step two is something the applicant has also done. They did a delineation even prior to January 1st, 2025. The delineation was done a long time ago. Not so long that it's not valid, but it was, it was done quite a while ago. And then step three, which, which my understanding the applicant hasn't done yet, and that's okay. We'll get into that a little bit more. It would be to submit for a project jurisdictional determination. And that's where DEC looks at and confirms the boundary of the delineation and identifies whether or not there is a need, the applicant needs to get an Article 24 permit. Step one is very important, the parcel JD, because that's what, that's, the DEC at that point classifies the wetlands. So the, the DEC response that Mr. Hado and the property owner received did identify, that, that response classified those wetlands. And that informs the, the permit process, if there's a need for an Article, Article 24 permit. This happens to be another screenshot. There's just two more slides, this one and one more. This, this happens to be a screenshot of the parcel JD process for the state from their, from their presentation. And basically, on the left-hand side, you'll see that, that brown tan slide. The applicant submits the parcel JD request form on the, on the DEC's website. And that request goes to the Albany office at New York State DEC, their central office. It doesn't go to a regional office. So this is where the DEC staff evaluates the information that they have and are able to kick back a, a parcel jurisdictional determination response. Either yes, there are jurisdictional wetlands, or no, there aren't. So in this case, the applicant received a, a yes response over here on the right-hand side. Jurisdictional, jurisdictional wetlands are classified. So then we hit the, we go to the next slide. And so the applicant, they, the applicant hires a consultant or contacts the region to do a delineation. And this, in this instance, a delineation has already been done. And that delineation would, for a project JD, submits to the regional office. Submit to the regional office for confirmation of the, the boundary and then identification of whether or not there needs to be any DEC permit involved with the project. So in addition to submitting that delineation, they would also submit project plans to identify whether or not there's a need for a DEC permit. Some municipalities, I'll call out down here on the bottom, the bottom blue stop sign, I'll call it, is some municipalities require a non-jurisdictional letter to, to move forward with a project. And if this is the case, the region can provide a non-jurisdictional letter. So one of the questions that I have in, in my mind is, you know, or, or the applicant may have in their mind is, is can this project move forward without having the project jurisdictional determination? And I think at this point, we have enough information from the parcel JD and the applicant's response that also includes updated plans to show work outside of that 100-foot buffer or adjacent area to the wetlands. I think that gives the planning board enough information to be able to continue on with evaluating the, the environmental impacts of the project, right? And at some point, it would, it would likely behoove the property owner and the applicant to submit their project JD to the regional office in Albany, or, I'm sorry, regional office in Avon. Both start with A. I guess that's why I got them confused. Just to, just to either confirm that they don't need a permit, or if they do, they can go through that process. And that's a state permit. That's not something that they need to get from the town. And I think that's, I think that's something that can be taken care of either as a condition of, of potential action in the future by this planning board. And, and we could leave it at that. Are there any, are there any questions on this?
So what obligation does the property owner have in terms of what goes on or what doesn't go on in or adjacent to that 100-foot buffer? So for instance, if you look at Lot 1, the, the house is going to be almost immediately adjacent to the buffer, as is the leach field. And the, sort of the corollary to that is, if you notice, the, the line for the, the open space easement is well within that 100-foot buffer. So I'm very curious what's, what's allowed and what's not allowed.
Any work in the buffer area, my understanding is, would need to be permitted.
Okay.
Yeah.
So being just even feet outside the line is no problem.
Right.
But a silt fence might not be a bad idea.
Uh, so, silt fence would need to stay outside of the 100-foot adjacent area.
Okay. To protect things from going into the buffer.
On, on that, there's two utilities, a gas line and electric line, presumably underground. They are within that 100-foot buffer.
I, I moved them out, actually.
Okay, I'm looking maybe at a dated one.
Yeah, I think what I'm seeing on your screen, that's an outdated.
Okay.
Plan.
I thought we had, this has the.
Literally, you can, you can't, you really can't do anything within that buffer.
Right, okay, so just making sure that that's the case. So, all right, so you addressed that. The way it is, literally, literally everything underground or on the ground.
Yes.
Has to be outside of that 100-foot buffer.
Right.
Okay.
And in addition to this, what this little slideshow might convey to you tonight, which a lot of it was pulled, the information was pulled from New York State DEC regulations and their webinar. I, I will forward to the planning board and also to the applicant, a, a link, a web link to that webinar. And I'll queue up for you the time within that, that video that, that kind of explains all of this. And that's just going to be maybe a little bit helpful for you too. Well, this is, this is something that's not unique to this project now, right? This, these are regulations and these are processes that are, are, need to be followed across New York State, right? Not just Victor, not just Ontario County, all of New York.
And for other applications that are coming before the board, near and far, so to speak.
Yes, yeah.
So.
Yep.
I, I'll mention Timberview, that's going to have, it's right up the road from here. It's similar conditions. So it's good to get familiar with this process. And Wes, I appreciate you putting this together and help familiarize us and show us the importance of keeping up with the times. So that having been said, Al, any questions? Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of comments, I guess, and questions. John, is there a conservation easement then that goes along with the 100-foot buffer? The new 100-foot buffer?
Yeah, we, that has been maintained. It's, it's basically 50% of the property.
And so on your, I'm just looking at your plat map here, your preliminary plat. And I was, I don't see a conservation easement.
Well, it's some, I, I can't see that far.
I mean, I would assume that's the case. I just wanted to. Yeah.
Just FYI, anything you say over there, it won't pick up on the microphone, just FYI.
John, you can take the handheld if you'd like to walk over there and use your close-up.
Haven't changed it at all. Basically, how is this outlined like right here?
They can't hear you, John.
It basically follows. You have to actually use the microphone.
Yeah, the microphones are funny, so when I do the recording, it won't get you.
Auto recording, okay. No, it basically follows the 100-foot buffer.
Okay. And, and the reason I asked a question is because I, I don't see it on your plat. And I was curious about that. And, and then you, you mentioned the, the waiver. And my recollection was that once upon a time, you did a, an analysis towards getting a cluster of determination on this so that you could organize the lots the way you show. And, and you did the analysis that we asked you to do. I guess it's my understanding, if we grant cluster subdivision status, that a waiver for the private drive isn't necessarily necessary. Does that go along with understandings that you have, Wes, or anyone else?
It's an interesting thought. I think, I think this, this point may have been brought up in a previous meeting as well. And I, I guess, I, I, I understand that both, there's a provision both in the town code as well as the Design and Construction Standards about having no more than three lots on a, on a common shared driveway. So in, in one instance, and relative to the code, you do have that ability with the clustering provisions to, you know, kind of, kind of work around, if you will, that requirement. As, as far as the Design and Construction Standards go, I think maybe just as, as good practice, it might be worthwhile for us to cite that and, and maybe even just reference, reference the potential waiver.
This might sound silly, but is there a difference between a private road and a shared driveway? And is it relevant to what we're discussing?
There is, there is. A private, the, the construction and the materials, the section, the section detail of a, of a private road would be basically the same as what a, a public road, or a road that would be constructed for, for public dedication or dedication to the town. They would need to be the same, right? So a shared driveway, that's going to be not as a robust sort of.
No culverts, no things like that, or?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm having a hard time describing it, but it's basically a, a, what do I want to call it? HS25 loading requirement driveway.
It's the construction itself?
Yeah, it's the construction.
More rigorous or robust?
Yep, thank you.
It's the driveway section, you know, the subbase and the different thicknesses of asphalt, binder and base. You want it, like Wes said, more robust construction.
I just had one more comment on the conservation easements. I'm, I'm looking at your site and utility plan. I see that there is a conservation easement, but it's on the, it's on the wetland itself. And it's not inclusive of the 100-foot buffer. That's what I'm seeing here. See a rebar to be set, CEM.
Does not include the newly established 100-foot buffer at the southeast corner.
Okay.
I, I didn't do an analysis on that, but it doesn't really include that corner.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was reading this right.
Yeah.
And, and I guess my, my final question just relates to drainage and the concerns that were expressed and whether Lobella has had a chance to look at what they're proposing and feels they're doing what they're supposed to do, if they've, more to be done.
Yeah, there's, so to Mr. Hado's point earlier, you're wondering about, you know, your March submission and Lobella's responses to that. So we have been working on, on a response letter or to update our town engineer comments. And we will plan to get that out here as soon as possible. And the, the updated plans are helpful in that because we're able to incorporate any, any comments that, you know, may have, may not apply anymore, given.
Correct.
Uh, your updated plans. So that, those, those are helpful. One of the questions I might have is the infiltration testing that we talked about a few months back. Has there been any progress on that to do infiltration testing for the, for the drainage in lieu, in lieu of using the perk, perk test for septic?
No, we're, we're, we're waiting for some decent weather.
Yeah.
Dry, dry out a little bit and then move forward with that. And we've been waiting on the wetland situation as well, so. But yeah, we're, we, we understand that we have to get that done.
Okay. So Mary, so Mary Steblin in our office, the certified erosion, erosion control person and our grading and stormwater person, she is taking a look at the updated plans. And we'll have some updated comments in that regard, yeah.
Okay. I was going to ask if anyone else had more questions for Wes and/or applicant, so Joe?
Sure, I wanted to piggyback on the, the conservation easement questions. I, I noted with interest Lobella's comments about the nature of the opens, open space easements versus the most restrictive. And that there, there's problems kind of both ways. If you look at the easement in, in Lot 1 and in Lot 7, they run real close to the house. And an open space easement would allow for lawns to be put in, for instance. But then the problem, which is desirable, right? So you want to put fertilizer and things on your lawn and the grade is going to take that fertilizer rate down into the wetlands. So I'm, I'm, I'm looking, I don't have an answer. I just, problems kind of crop up in my head. So I'm looking, I don't have an answer, I just, problems kind of crop up in my head. How do we preserve the wetlands and still allow the property owner to enjoy the, you know, some sort of a lawn around a good portion of their house? And I don't have an answer, I just got the question.
That's a good question.
It's tough, and I know. And, you know, we've also got the proposed stone check dams in a number of places in the open space. Those would probably need to be protected, and I don't know if an open space would do that. And it may be that site-specific might be a more prudent way to take a look at this and satisfy both the needs to protect the wetland and offer some amenities for the homeowners to have a lawn and take advantage of their properties.
It's a good point, but the, our basic philosophy designing this was to preserve the natural woodlands and meadows and vegetation. And we are required by town to have that 75-foot buffer on the stream going through the site. And then we've got the 100-foot buffer on the wetlands, the one in the back and the one in the corner there, southeast corner. So no, I mean, and then a lot of the on-site drainage will be going to the infiltration basins. So there's a filtering aspect to those, too. But yes, there will be some mowing around the home, like everybody does. But the idea was to keep it as natural as possible with minimal, I mean, we don't want to just bulldoze the whole site. There's a, it's a beautiful property, it really is. And those elements are what are going to sell the home sites.
Agreed.
And I think the people that are going to be interested in that type of environment, I hope, are not going to like want to have, you know, wall-to-wall manicured lawn. And I believe in the past that there was some indication that we had to have some restrictions in that regard, too, from the planning board.
Just a couple of comments. I'm Keith Nicoloff, I'm the owner with my wife Lori. Nice to see you guys. Glad to be back after the DEC delay. As you can see, the big, on Lot 7, that big wetlands there. Interesting, when we got this map back, that it called it wetlands, because we've been farming the whole property for the last 20 years. Never had, well, it just, but that's where they delineated. So I wanted to give you some assurance that it's good land. We asked the conservation board if we could continue to mow it, because it can get unwieldy and not pleasant looking. So they gave us that consideration to go for the least restrictive access to that, so we could keep it up today, keep it up. But I want to assure you that that is, we farm it all the time, and it's dry, and we won't, we don't expect a problem. But I think what John said is the right answer, is that the infiltration that they've designed will work. I think Wes, you told us that we have to monitor that, make sure it works. If it doesn't, we have to go to ponds or some other method. But that can happen after preliminary approval is given. So we're working as hard as we can to be compliant, and delays are killing us, but we've got to follow the laws. So thank you for being here tonight with us as well. That's all I wanted to say, just give you some assurances that while it's wetland delineated, it's not wetland. And we may go back to the DEC and challenge that, that comment, because it's good land. I don't, it's going to be our lot, so, you know, we know how to control, we know what we're going to do with it, so it's not an issue. Thank you.
Appreciate your perspective.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions?
So what I'm thinking of for maybe to work towards the next meeting is to get into Part 2 of the EAF and, you know, begin to make that a seeker evaluation, so you can make a determination of significance. And that would prepare you for action on the preliminary subdivision. We wouldn't be able to give preliminary, take preliminary action until seeker is done. So I guess our target at LaBella is to provide an updated response letter and prepare you to address seeker at the next meeting.
I guess the only question I'd have regarding what Joe brought up regarding chemicals and things like that is, if you've got lawn on the 100-foot buffer, is there a way to restrict use of any chemicals on that? I mean, it's hard to get past.
Well, if it's been farmed for 20 years, I'm sure that there's been some applications.
Well, that's my point, is.
And a site-specific easement might do that, too.
I mean, now we're putting seven homes on the lot, whereas before it was farm fields and agriculture, but we also have to address whatever DEC comments we end up with, so, or the applicant does. So maybe some thought between now and the next meeting regarding that comment, I think, would be helpful. Otherwise, actually, we still have a public hearing open on this one. Is there anyone that has a question? Step right up, name, address, and fire away.
Hi, Deborah Eilich, my husband Peter. You've heard from us before. I just have a couple of comments. One is, our concerns remain the same. Now that the water is not coming from the south, and I understand the reason the water isn't coming from the south is because it's Town of Farmington water, and supposedly it doesn't have enough pressure. But now the water's coming from the fire hydrant on our property, and they're digging up our driveway. And I don't think still, the water that flows when we have a lot of rain is going to get worse if you put seven houses on that property. And so I think it's too many that is wetlands. I used to walk that property a lot with my dog, and a lot of times she couldn't walk it because it was too wet. And other than that, like I said, oh, I have one other question. I don't know what the protocol is. I don't understand everything that was discussed today as far as the DEC requirements, et cetera. Is there, would the protocol allow for us to have a conversation with the appropriate DEC personnel before they come to any final conclusions? Because we, I mean, as I've expressed in, you know, our other meetings, it's a major concern, the runoff is a major concern. And I appreciate bringing up the chemicals and stuff, because it is going to flow. The water flows to the north.
Excuse me, when you said the runoff is a major concern, I don't know if that's a DEC question regarding the wetlands so much as a FEMA request.
Yeah, we talked about floodplains in the past, right?
Yeah.
And the amount of water that you sometimes experience on your property. Yeah, that, so for example, we were talking about the DEC wetland regulations, and, you know, I'd be happy to provide you with a link to the information that we have as far as the wetlands go. But I don't know that that would help you with your concern on the runoff.
Well, how the drainage is, is set up ultimately.
Yeah, so, you know, it's all designed by a licensed PE, right? The design is done by a PE. And we've got another, the town has, through contractual services with LaBella Associates, we have our stormwater person also reviewing that to be sure that it's in compliance with regulations. So more to come on that from LaBella in terms of a response, so you'll probably hear a bit more that hopefully would be helpful for you.
Okay.
And what I heard the applicant also say, or maybe it was Mr. Hado, about the waterline going from the other direction, is that it was, it would have to be excavated within the wetland delineated area if you kept it coming from the Farmington side. So coming from the north, from Monroe County side, it wouldn't be intruding on the wetlands. Is that correct? So I think that's why. And I didn't hear a capacity problem from Farmington. I heard that it might be a little lower pressure from Monroe County. Is that true, John?
Little bit.
Okay. It's working. It's, it will function adequately for this application, these houses?
Correct.
Okay. John said yes, since he wasn't at a mic.
Okay, one last comment. I appreciate Lisa keeping me informed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Unless there's something from the board, we're still through the public process next meeting. It sounds like we're going to start going through the preliminary plan application, the seeker process.
Yeah, we should have, we should have you set up pretty well, I think, for the next meeting.
Okay, good. So I guess that ends the discussion on this particular application and for the evening, unless there's something else, Lisa?
Just a reminder that the next meeting is Wednesday.
It's off by one cycle.
We have the holiday, so.
So, okay. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
Scott moves?
Second.
No seconds, all favor?
Aye.
All right. Have a good evening, and I wish Bernie the best in his recovery.